I will hereby call to order the meeting of the first, we're going to do the meeting on the public hearing on the 2023 budget. So we'll begin with that. And so we're going to have Gary come up and present the 2023 budget for us, please. Gary, before you start.
Um, just so I can have the motion, are we, what are we approving exactly specifically?
So this is the public hearing on the budget and there's not a motion to approve.
Okay, so this is just an informational, okay, just wanted to double check. Thank you.
Bear with me. So I'd like to welcome members of the community to the meeting tonight. The public hearing for the 2023 budget is the library's opportunity to share information about its financial plans for the next calendar year. This hearing is also required by law and must be held at least 10 days before the library board of trustees adopts the budget. The adoption of the 2023 budget will take place at the October 19 board meeting. For 2023 Monroe County will experience. For 2023 Monroe, Monroe County will experience a major library service expansion. Yeah. The HDMI cable or the?
Uh, yeah, probably maybe coming out of your computer.
Okay. So here's a look at the, um, let's see here. Here's a look at the exterior. And the exterior windows in this view are looking out towards Gordon Pike. This is the children's area on the north side of the building. And this is the teen space. And the teaching kitchen. So as a taxpayer, the question might come up about how this service expansion is going to impact the property tax bill. So this report shows the trend for the growth in assessed value for all the taxable property in the county for businesses and homeowners since 2012. So looking back 10 years ago, we see that assessed value was at about $6.2 billion. Then for 2013, assessed value increased by a little over $57 million, which was less than a 1% increase. So for the next eight years, the rate of growth slowly creeps up. And in 2014, the increase was about one and a half percent. Then 2% in 2018. Then in 2021, assessed value goes up by nearly $500 million or 6.69%. And in 2022, up about 447 million, just over 6%. And then in 2023, the increase is about $1.5 billion or about 18%. So assessed value has gone up nearly to nearly $10 billion in 2023. This surprisingly large increase in assessed value is driving the library tax rate down. The tax rate will drop from 9.25 cents per hundred dollars of assessed value in 2022 down to 8.38 cents in 2023. So this slide shows the 2023 budget compared to last year's budget. The total operating fund revenue is projected to be about $10.6 million. Most of that $10.6 million will come from property tax revenue. So at the top of the report, we see about $7.4 million in property tax revenue will be received in 2023. The increase in the property tax levy from the previous year's budget is about $350,000 or 5%. This, the 5% rate of increase is a calculation based on the average increase in Indiana residents' personal income for the most recent six years. The result of the calculation is the growth quotient for 2023, and it works out to be a 5% increase. So I'm switching to this surplus analysis report to highlight the trend in the growth quotient over the past six years. So the top of the report starts with assessed value. The next line down is the property tax rate, which averages about nine and a half cents over the six-year period. Then we go down to the growth quotient line. So it shows a pretty clear trend. Starting in 2016, the growth quotient was 2.6%. Then it rises to about 3.5% in 2019 and 2020. Then for 2021 and 2022, it rises to the mid four cent level. And for 2023, the growth quotient gets all the way up to 5%. So moving down the report, local income tax for 2023 is projected to be about $2.8 million. So the property tax income of about 7.4 million plus the 2.8 million in local income tax makes up most of the 10.6 million in operating revenue. The other lines include commercial vehicle excise tax, financial institution tax, license excise tax, fees from lost and damaged, and plaque fees, revenue from copying and printing, and rent income and investment income. So all of this gets us to the 10.6 million operating fund revenue projection for 2023. So in addition to the operating fund income, we also have revenue coming into the debt fund. For 2023, the library will receive about $900,000 from the debt fund levy. This will cover the payments being made next year on the library bonds that were sold in 2021. The library sold a $6 million bond last year to pay for branch construction, and that will be repaid over 20 years. Library also sold a $2 million bond last year for non-branch related costs for equipment and facility needs, and that will be repaid over six years. So now we'll move down and look at the spending side of the budget. So the focus of the library's financial strategy is shifting now that we move past construction, branch construction financing. We're in a tight labor market, challenged with staffing a new branch. For 2023, the operating fund spending budget is about $11.4 million. So cost increases related to the new branch are included in those cost estimates. So in addition to the $11.4 million operating fund budget, we also have about $900,000 budgeted in the debt fund to make bond payments. The LRF and the Rainy Day budget totals of about $600,000 are, would only be used for something unexpected. So the total spending budget for all the funds for 2023 will be about $12.9 million. So there are a lot of numbers on this report that show actual revenue and expense trends for the library since 2016. The numbers I would highlight are the operating revenue, which goes from about $8.2 million in 2016 to about $10.4 million in 2021. An increase of over $2 million a year in five years. And in that same period, the total operating expense only increased by about $1 million. So operating revenue has been increasing at a faster rate than operating expense. This operating surplus grew from about $700,000 in 2016 to about $1.8 million in 2021. The funds generated from the operating surplus in those years have paid for facility improvements and new branch construction. So as Bloomington grows, so do library service needs. Questions on the budget?
When it says in the operating fund revenue, the rent, what is that rent for?
El Centro is our, the main one.
Okay.
And then occasionally.
Because we rent space to them, is that?
Pardon?
We rent space to them?
Yes.
Okay.
And then occasionally we'll rent out meeting rooms.
Okay, I understand.
Going in, going out, how much of that is COVID-related? Like, will we continue to see that same expenditure, you think? Or do you think it's because, you know, services, as much as they were done, you know, remotely and virtually, that will change over time? Do you think that was a factor?
Well, so when, when we look at 2021, you can see the impact of COVID by, because the total salary and benefits right here is under $6 million. In the previous year, it was higher. That's the first time we've ever seen wages and benefits decrease. And it's because of the reduced operating hours and reduced wages and benefits.
I'm also thinking that, that difference in growth between the, the revenue and the expense, the operating revenue and expense, so you're saying a large part of that has been the salary?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, the, the COVID did have a pretty big impact on salaries and benefits in terms of.
And the other thing I'm wondering is about the continued growth quotient and being, you know, how that's factored in with the market and salaries and as that starts to cool.
You're right, we can't, we cannot sustain a growth quotient of 5%.
Okay. So I'm right in thinking in the future, this trend isn't going to continue?
So, so we have to, we kind of have to look at that from, from year to year. And it, we, we have, you know, quite a bit of time to, to react in case the growth quotient would do something strange.
And luckily, we're in a good position to have that time.
Pardon?
We're in a good position to have that time according to our budget and.
Yes, we are, yes, we are.
But it's something to consider.
I, but I really, I don't see, for the whole state of Indiana, I don't see anything on the horizon that would, I guess, cause total personal income to not continue to increase.
Okay.
At a, at a pretty good pace.
I like hearing that.
Others?
Are there any members of the public that wish to ask questions or make comments? I'm seeing none. Do we have a motion to adjourn the public hearing on the 2023 budget? Okay, all those in favor of adjournment signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it, and we are adjourned. And we're going to begin the Monroe County Public Library Board of Trustees Public Hearing on an, on additional appropriation. So the first item on, the first and only item on the agenda is the proposal for additional appropriation. Do I have a motion to approve the additional appropriation?
So moved.
Okay, and Gary will explain what this additional appropriation is about.
So another way to describe an additional appropriation would be to call it a request to spend more money than we originally budgeted in 2022. So this request to spend more money has to go through an approval process that includes a public hearing and approval at a county council meeting. Tonight's public hearing gives members of the public an opportunity to share their thoughts on this proposal. So the reason for the request to appropriate an additional $6 million over this year's budget is related to paying for the construction of the new Southwest branch that's in process. So $5 million will come from the Rainy Day Fund, and $1 million will come from the LRF Fund. When the 2022 spending budget was prepared, we had a limit on how much total spending could increase from the previous year. The 2021 total spending budget was about $11.7 million. So for 2022, the maximum percentage increase in the spending budget was limited to 4.3%. And that, that's the growth quotient. So the 4.3% increase would cover normal operating cost increases. But we knew ahead of time that it would not cover the cost of branch construction. So we had planned on doing this additional appropriation this year. The operation, the operating surplus over several years was saved and put in the Rainy, Rainy Day Fund and the LRF Fund. Now we need to withdraw the $6 million accumulated and use it to pay for branch construction. So tonight, we are asking the board for approval of this resolution to use $5 million from the Rainy Day Fund and $1 million from the LRF Fund for the Southwest branch construction project. So when this public hearing is completed, the, and the board has approved the resolution, the next step will be to go to the county council in October and ask for their approval. Any questions?
Any members of the, of the public commenting on this? Okay, all those in favor of approving the resolution to approve $5 million to be transferred from the Rainy Day Fund and $1 million to be transferred from the LRF Fund signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Do we have a motion to adjourn the public hearing on additional appropriation? Okay, all those in favor of adjourning this meeting signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it. And now we will begin the Monroe County Public Library Board of Trustees meeting for September. And I'd like to go ahead and call this meeting to order and ask this, since we haven't already, go ahead around and, and to introduce ourselves and a book you're reading if you'd like to share. I'll start with Kathy.
Kathy Loser, and just picked up the book by Jennifer Chivrani that called Switchboard Soldiers. It's a fictionalized account of the women that were recruited by AT&amp;T, or I don't know if it was AT&amp;T back then, but they were pretty stellar in switching calls on the switchboard for operators. In fact, it took men over a minute to switch the calls. Women did it in 10 seconds. Got to get that in.
How did I know where you were going with that?
Nichelle Wash, and I am reading The Sum of Us: What Racism Cost Everyone and How We Can Prosper Together by Heather McGee.
Jamie Burkhart, and I am between books.
Chris Harrison, and I'm listening to The Memory Keeper.
Greer Carson, I'm reading a book on Beethoven Symphonies by Lewis Lockwood, and my wife and I are replaying Fallout 4 without our children. And we are watching The House of the Dragon and The Rings of Power at the same time because this is a wonderful time to get back stories on, on two incredible fantasy series.
I am Kari Essery, and I am actually reading a Dungeons and Dragons novel. So keeping with the theme here.
I'm Fred Reissinger, and I will be reading The Sixty-Something Crisis. And I'm certainly sixty-something. I just returned from a trip to the Baltic, and one of my favorite places was Finland. And they have some libraries that match ours, and I was very happy there.
I visit libraries too when I travel.
Yes. And one of the libraries is where they hand out the, uh, the awards.
Oh, the Nobel.
Nobel, right, yes, it's right in front of the library. Nobel, all, the Nobel Peace Prize is delivered in Norway, but all the other Nobel prizes are in Helsinki, Finland.
The first item on the agenda is to approve the consent agenda items, which include the minutes of the August 17, 2022 board meeting, the minutes of the September 14, 2022 board work session meeting, the monthly financial report, the monthly bills for payment, the personnel report, and the board meeting calendar. Do we have a motion to approve these items?
So moved.
Second.
Questions or comments? I actually had one. I believe we had moved the December meeting to December 14, and it still says December 21 in the.
I'll change that for next month. Thank you for catching that.
Okay.
And I was just, I noticed on page 53 of the financials, first financial payroll is like over and over and over and over again. So, and it says for perf, does that mean each person's perf money goes in one line per line? That's what it appears, but.
It sounds like that's the detailed monthly bills paid report.
Okay.
And so it, when.
Everybody's salary is.
When we make entries for each account, it breaks down each line, and so it just makes it look like.
Whoa, yeah.
A lot, a lot of.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That report is mainly in the, in the packet for audit purposes. I mean, you are welcome to scan it, but it's, it's really a lot of detail when you get down to that, breaking down a, a perf bill.
Well, I kind of looked for trends, and that was a big trend. So, thank you.
Okay.
Are there any other questions or comments about the consent agenda items? Seeing none, all in favor of approving the consent agenda items signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Next, we'll hear from Greer with the Director's Monthly Report.
Okay, a couple of highlights from this past month. We've added two new bookmobile stops, one at Millennium Apartments and the other at Our Way Convenience Store in Crestmont. We're fortunate enough to have our friends from Outreach and Vital Tonight give us an update on a lot of other things related to Outreach Services. The use of Worldbook Online skyrocketed last month, due in part to our monthly promotional focus on that database, which was something crazy like a 4,000% increase or something like that. Remarkable. There are a few bullet points in the Director's Report referencing our e-access card program, which continues to see success in supporting our partners in the area, schools. Our Tween Space mural is finally complete, and the space is now open. If you haven't seen it yet, I encourage you to walk on over there after the meeting because it looks really great. Our Ellisville Garden grew and harvested 45 pounds of produce, which we then donated to Pantry 279 in Ellisville. And then this is not in the Director's Report for August, but this week, as you probably know, is banned books week. And like many public libraries throughout our country, we're promoting awareness of the ever-growing list of banned and challenged books, as well as general awareness of the basic issues surrounding intellectual freedom in libraries. And given the present state of public discourse surrounding access to content, it's worth reflecting on how critical this issue of intellectual freedom is for public libraries. And on that somewhat sober note, I'm happy to answer any questions about the Director's Report.
I, I have a question, not so much related to this, but about one of the topics. The e-access cards, I noticed when reading, said if schools want to participate.
Yes.
Is where that is now.
Yes.
Without naming schools, what type of participation are we getting in the community?
So that's a really good question, and we've worked for years with the schools on, and trying to engage participation in this program. It's, it's kind of hit or miss, and which is one of the reasons we've been doing a lot of communication with the different schools on understanding what the benefits of the cards are and how to use them effectively, and also inviting them to say, honestly, if you don't need something like this in the classroom, that's okay, but we don't want to distribute tens of thousands of cards that aren't going to be used, which we had seen in the past a few times. So this program, although on balance it's very successful, does require an ongoing kind of refining process, and that is largely through communication with our partners at the schools. So rather than blanket the schools with as many cards as they want, we're a little more intentional and say, who really needs how many cards? And of course, they can request more than they do, and we respond quickly. But it's not simply a, let's have one card for every student throughout the county kind of thing. It's a little more refined.
Would you say half of our schools are participating? Like, what, what would you say?
I, I don't know the exact number off the top of my head. I don't know that it's half of the schools. It's more classroom-based at this point. So certain classrooms in certain schools, certain libraries and media centers in certain schools, but, but not others.
Okay, that's good to know, thank you.
But MCCSC, RBB, and some of the charters, yes, we're, we're working with all of them.
Great, thanks.
Are there any other questions or comments for Greer? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to old business, and that will be a Southwest branch construction update from Greer also.
So the elevator walls are completed. I know everyone was worried about that. The rough-in for plumbing has also been completed. The main level concrete slab is completed. So we are able to walk through the building. We did this week before last. So for the first time, we were able to walk on the main floor and look out at Bachelor Forest and Gordon Pike and get a true sense for what it's going to be like in that space. The metal framing. The metal framing for the exterior wall has also started to go up. Installation of metal hangers for duckwork continues. Our drilling company has reported that the completion of the two boars that go through the rock under Gordon Pike, each at 130 feet in length and about six inches wide, that is completed and our contractor, Strasser, has verified that it's correct. And we are now awaiting the updated costs for that boring. I know I've referenced it every other month for a while now. I expect we'll get that number pretty soon. No major problems in completing the boring project. But as expected, we did hit some rock going under Gordon Pike to tap into the utility lines across the street. And we are continuing our discussions about how to make programmatic use of the unique outdoor spaces at the site, including the proposed amphitheater and the surrounding areas. As we get closer to the end of the year, we're going to have some concrete plans to bring to you all and share for what we imagine the entire site will look like. The building, outdoor patio, amphitheater, and maybe more.
I have a question about the amphitheater. No context behind this question, so I'm just really curious.
Sure.
Don't we already have something like that on the south side of town at Switchyard?
Yes, we do.
So why would we, really curious, why would we do this at another south side location?
Sure, so that's a really good question. And the best answer, I think, is that we don't have a space like that as a library on our own property where we can do regular outdoor programs or manage our own series of public events. Certainly, we could look to do those things at a shared space like at Switchyard. But to have it on our own property gives us an opportunity to do programming that we just don't have at downtown or at Elletsville. But the second answer is the site calls for it. Because of the slope of the site, it's basically begging us to do something other than just leave the grass right there, unless we just wanted a grassy area for people to play around, which we'll also have alongside the amphitheater. But it's kind of a perfect little spot in terms of the geography to say, let's do something really interesting that will invite, you know, performances and library program, but also just casual use by anyone who's at the library.
To ask another question about that site and the amphitheater. Are you considering making sure that the amphitheater is permeable and not just all concrete or all limestone?
Actually, it's mostly grass.
Great.
So there will be limestone seating, sort of the steps. And I believe we're going to do a three-tiered amphitheater with built-in lights. But most of the steps are grass, so not unlike Switchyard. But there will be stone seating that creates the step effect.
It's kind of like what's behind the President's House, right?
Behind Brian.
Yeah, actually, it is pretty similar to the one on campus, yeah.
It's a great facility there, too.
Yeah.
Okay, are there any other questions or comments about the Southwest Branch? Okay, moving on then. Our next order of business is the update to the Director Evaluation Form. Do I have a motion to approve the changes to the Director Evaluation Form?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, so a little background that a few weeks ago, a subcommittee of the board got together with Kyle Womackmeyer-Harty just to discuss some changes to the review of the annual review of the library director that we fill out every year. And a lot of it boiled down to, we just felt we needed to update some language in it and maybe combine and reduce the number of questions because some of them were a little redundant. So in the packet is the, what the current survey questions are and then the proposed language for the new survey question. And each of these would be rated on a scale of exceptional, commendable, adequate, needs improvement, or don't know. So we discussed this last week at the work session. Are there any other questions or comments?
I think the discussion we had last week was very thorough and we didn't go question by question, but pretty close.
It did. And we also decided to, at this time, not move forward with a staff and library manager survey as well because we discussed that there were going to be other avenues for getting the feedback that we would need for the review and some other things that were going forward from the library anyway. So we're not overloading people with surveys. Okay, seeing no questions, all those in favor of approving the changes to the annual review for the library director signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Next, we have a payment proposal. Do we have a motion to approve the payment proposal?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, and we are going to turn this over to Greer to explain the payment proposal.
Thank you. So tonight, we are proud to propose something we don't typically do, but that we are in a unique position to do responsibly, something that is for and about MCPL staff. Given that our operating budget for 2022 included approximately $200,000 for staffing at the Southwest Branch, and given that our schedule for opening that branch is sometime in May of next year and therefore will not require the use of those funds before January, we are now in a position to reallocate those funds in an equitable and meaningful way. We would like to use these funds to distribute one-time payments to each and every MCPL employee in the amount of $1,500 to be paid out in November of this year. Our proposal is to issue stipends during the first week of November to all MCPL employees except for the Director and Assistant Director of Public Services. These stipends would go to all employees regardless of pay grade or tenure at the library. This includes all full-time and part-time staff. It's important to emphasize that these stipends are in no way connected to the compensation study currently underway. In other words, this is not a recommendation from our compensation study consultants, nor is it an indication as to possible wage increases we may adopt as a result of that study. Instead, this has been a parallel conversation among a few of us about how best to use these compensation funds from 2022 to reward all MCPL employees and at a time when it might be most meaningful to the majority of our staff. I'd like to thank Gary, Kyle, Josh, and Becky for working with me so carefully and thoughtfully on this proposal. And we are happy to answer any questions you have. And thank you for considering this.
I just want to say that the timing is very good that we're doing this, talking with my friends that work at food banks and that are in charge of food banks. People that used to donate are now coming to get. So it's a rough time out there and so this is very helpful. Glad we can do this.
And I thought I read in the email about the proposal that it was going to be everyone across the board. So can you elaborate on why you took yourself and Assistant Director off of that?
Yeah, because we don't need this.
Okay.
I mean, I can't speak for Josh. But this kind of thing, and I think any library that does this excludes its administrators. There is a technical reason as well, to be honest, which is you all are the only ones who can determine what kind of money that I get.
Okay.
But yeah, this is something that, and there is precedent among some of our peer libraries who are looking to do things like this. And the right thing to do is to exclude administrators and something like it, so.
I think this is a good, good action.
Any questions or comments? Okay, all those in favor of approving the payment proposal signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it, so.
Thank you very much.
Very happy to approve this.
Do they know about this?
No, they do now.
And what a lovely time of year to get an additional.
Yes.
You know, I just thought this, it's just lovely.
I'm sending the message right now.
That's wonderful.
Yeah, it is. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Tonight, we'd like to welcome Chris Jackson, our Outreach Services Manager, for a department presentation. And then we'll move on to Bethany Turrentine for Vital.
Hi, I am Chris Jackson, the Manager of Outreach Services. I am always glad to make these remarks about what we do in the department. I'm smiling a little extra today after your very generous gesture. So thank you on behalf of all library staff for that. It's very much appreciated. Outreach at Monroe County Public Library comprises six distinct services. We have our bookmobile service. We have our van service to seniors. We have our house call service. We have our service to daycares and Headstarts. We have our service at the jail. And last, but by no means least, we have Vital, our volunteers in tutoring adult learners. So six different distinct service points. We staff those with 11 staff total, including myself in the department. They consist of an assistant manager, Bethany Turrentine, who's here today and will be speaking with you specifically about Vital. We also have two librarians and the rest of the staff are senior information assistants. Again, eight of us are full-time and three of the senior information assistants are part-time. I'm going to go into a little more detail about each of those service points. And then Bethany will present on Vital. If you have any questions, we'll be happy to answer them, especially at the end. But if you need to interrupt me, feel free to. So our bookmobile is a 30-foot step van made by Freightliner. It's probably the most visible of our non-vital outreach service points. It goes to 30 different places in the county every week. It runs a weekly schedule going out every day except for Fridays. Fridays, we reserve for maintenance of both of the vehicle and its collections. The collections, there's about 3,000 items shelved on the bookmobile at any given time and approximately a similar number checked out from the bookmobile shelves at a given time. Those collections are all rotated in from the downtown library. It's a small collection, but people grow to often really love it because we curate it to meet their specific needs. Nothing is on the truck for more than five or six months. And every day, we rotate some items on, take some of the items that are at the end of their stay off. And if you're regular browsing our collections and you're specifically interested in new manga or gardening books or large print cozy mysteries, we try to add things with you specifically in mind. And that personal touch makes it a very high-quality browsing experience for our regular users. The bookmobile focuses on three distinct audiences. It goes to rural, remote communities, the towns that are distant from Elletsville and Bloomington, places like Steinsville and Harrodsburg, Unionville. We also go to a large number of lower-income communities, whether they're in Bloomington or outside of Bloomington. We know lower-income individuals and families generally underutilize library services. And we want to make it as easy as possible by making it super convenient, super friendly, and parking right by your door if we possibly can to encourage new users from that audience. And then finally, we visit a number of senior housing locations with the bookmobile. We have one route that's devoted to senior housing where a significant number of the residents live independently and have pretty good mobility. We have other senior services that I'll get to in just a minute. We also do a lot of requests and holds on the bookmobile. So for many, and this increased during the pandemic, we were a convenient pickup location. You'd go online, place your holds, and rather than come downtown and look for a parking space, you could come to a bookmobile stop and they all have plentiful parking. Pre-pandemic, we were averaging about 100,000 circulations per year from the bookmobile. Last year, we circled about 83,000 items. This year, I'm projecting we'll get over 90,000 items. Hopefully, in 2023, we'll be back to pre-pandemic levels as people build us back into their weekly schedule, visiting us every week or at least most weeks. I mentioned senior stops for the bookmobile. Back in 2004, when we had a new strategic plan that really emphasized accessibility, we knew we weren't meeting the needs of individuals who couldn't climb the steps on the bookmobile. And at that point, we purchased our outreach van that specializes in senior communities. So the distinction between the van and the bookmobile is not just the size of the vehicle, but on the bookmobile, we assume you're going to come on and browse the collection inside the vehicle. With the van, we have mobile carts, rolling carts that we take off the vehicle using a wheelchair lift. And we set them up inside an assisted care or nursing home facility so that residents who might have lower mobility can still have that browsing experience and that one-on-one contact with a library staff member who can do reader's advisory and try to pair them up with a new author or find a new genre for them or introduce them to a new format. So because this caters to older individuals, many of whom have chronic health issues, it was severely curtailed by the pandemic. We did have some interim deliveries, no-contact deliveries, working with staff at these institutions. But we wanted to be extra cautious about serving this community that is at such high risk. So it was just May of this year that we restarted what we call the lobby stops, where we take the carts inside. We're still building that back up. We have nine sites currently on the service. We hope to have one or two more added by the end of the year. There is capacity with new senior sites coming to Monroe County to add more. And so I will be talking with Greer and Josh about how to possibly staff that in the future. Another service that specializes in our older members of the community is our house call service. So this is for individuals who have limited mobility, who don't live at a bookmobile stop or in a facility served by the van. If you live anywhere in the county and qualify by having a mobility disability or a chronic illness, we will do monthly deliveries from our department to you in your home. Anything that checks out from the library, we can deliver and we will circulate all of them for the four weeks until our next delivery. We divide these people. There's currently 83 people on the service. It's usually between 80 and 90. We add some new people almost every month. Unfortunately, we're seeing a lot of people towards the end of their lives and we lose people every month and frankly have lost a lot due to COVID. But we will deliver whatever items you want from the library. The following month, we'll pick them up as we deliver a new bag. People really appreciate this service. It really adds to the quality of life for many of these residents. And in addition to the high-quality media, there's the social contact of the regular phone calls and the monthly visits that many people appreciate as well. We typically circulate about 20,000 titles a year to house call patrons and I think we are on track to reach that number again this year. Then at the other end of the age spectrum, we have a service for Headstart locations and some of the larger daycares. We have a children's librarian in the department, Libby Clifane. She visits each of the Headstart locations, Headstart classrooms, actually, in the county every month. She delivers a new bag of, or several bags in some cases, of high-quality, early children's literature materials. And at the Headstart location, she also does a storytime where she's modeling best early literacy practices. It benefits the kids directly, but it also benefits the Headstart teachers. And as time allows, she will do an occasional training session for Headstart teachers on best early literacy practices. That's for the Headstarts. For the larger daycares in the county, we don't have the capacity to do the regular storytimes, but we do do a monthly delivery for those who opt in. We incorporate it with our house calls deliveries. So on every Friday, when we're making some of those house calls deliveries, we're also visiting some of the larger daycares to drop off materials. Many of our children's department senior information assistants work with the daycares on their selections. And as much as we can, we try to cater it to their curriculum and other themes that they're teaching that particular month and then supplement it with all the great wonderful picture books we have in our collection. Then finally, amongst, among our non-vital service points, we have our jail library service. So this is a partnership with the Monroe County Correctional Center. They fund their own library to the tune of $8,000 a year, but they cut us that check for $8,000, which we then spend on their behalf, building up and maintaining that collection. And in addition to maintaining the items, we are over there three days a week circulating those items and doing reader's advisory. Not surprisingly, this is an extremely popular program at the jail. The inmates love it, having a way to spend their time and with high-quality books, whether they're recreational or educational or books on substance abuse and addiction, which is a very popular topic at the jail. The staff and administration love it as well. I don't think they could possibly spend $8,000 that improves the safety and security of the facility as much as having a high-quality library. And to my knowledge, I'm not aware of any county libraries comparable to ours that have a service where the jail is funding the library to this extent. Most of those libraries are just filled with donated books. We also do get a lot of donations from the friends of the library that supplement the collection over there. But I'm very happy that the Sheriff's Department has been so happy to work with us. We actually started working on a new program over there this year called Read to Me. We partner with an organization called New Leaf New Life that I'm sure many of you are familiar with. And in this program, we help parents who are incarcerated record themselves reading aloud from pre-selected picture books. We then share a copy of the recording and it can be audio-only or a video recording with their child and the custodial parent of that child, along with a free copy of the book that's being read aloud that's theirs to keep. So this is a program that New Leaf New Life had been doing for a while, just the audio component. They realized with our children's literature expertise and some of our funding, we could improve the program. We've done 20, we've distributed 23 of those recordings so far and hope to maybe double that number for next year. So those are our service points. In addition to that, we have a lot of partnerships. We work with a lot of other agencies serving these same audiences. Chief among them for me is the Bloomington Council for Community Accessibility, where I chair one of their subcommittees. And we work on accessibility issues countywide. We've also done lots of programs with them. We've done programs with IU Health Dimension, Alzheimer's Resource Service to a large extent, Area 10 Agency on Aging, and a lot of other agencies to a small extent, many of them through our Vital program though. So at this point, I'm going to turn it over to Bethany to tell you all about the great work that she and her staff do in Vital. work that she and her staff do in VITAL. Any questions, I'll be happy to answer them when Bethany's done.
Thank you very much, Chris, for that presentation.
Hey there, thanks for having me. I'm excited to start off by sharing an exciting milestone for VITAL, volunteers in tutoring adult learners. This is our 45th year of service to the Monroe County community. So we are thrilled to be here, providing the essential services of adult basic literacy, English as a new language, and basic digital literacy skills for adults in the community. In addition to beating VITAL's 45th year, we also celebrated this year 30 years of service from former employee Jackie Lovings, who was with VITAL for 30 wonderful years. She decided to celebrate her 30th year by retiring in April. So we wish her all the best. She leaves behind some great big shoes. She has just been a wealth of resources and knowledge for this community for many, many years. So we wish Jackie all the best and are also excited for the opportunity to welcome new staff members to VITAL for kind of the next 30 years of VITAL services. So Jackie retired in April, and in May, we hired on two new senior information assistants. Mick Breeze is the full-time senior information assistant. Audra Loudenbarger is the part-time senior information assistant. And we're very lucky that both of them had previous MCPL experience, so they're already very familiar with library services and could really dive into working with adult literacy and English language learning programming. They have jumped in very enthusiastically. We're really excited, and we've kind of gotten through the basic onboarding phase and are really looking forward to what sorts of new programming and partnerships we can offer with this new team. The timing could not have been better for these new staff to come onboard. We are excited to be fully staffed again. This last two months, we have seen an absolute skyrocketing in the number of services that have been requested by the VITAL program. I think for August and September, we've been averaging 30 new requests a month, so that's almost one new student every day. Big jump for us. And the other challenge that comes with this increase in requests is it's a very different demographic than we've served previously. So as you may know, in 2021, Bloomington was designated as a refugee resettlement location, and we have great partnerships with the Exodus Refugee Program and the Refugee Support Network. So there's a wonderful communication and support services with kind of a network of people who are supporting and bringing people to the library for literacy services. But many of these adults who are coming in, as opposed to previously, we saw a lot of adults who had studied some English before. These adults were not prepared to move to the U.S. They came with very little planning, very little resources, and are now very desperate to learn English and need to learn quickly. And there's a lot of resources that are kind of competing for their time. Many of these adults have little-to-no experience with English. They also may have little-to-no experience with literacy in their own language. So we're facing, kind of looking at what sorts of resources and materials do we need to reach this new population. So part of that is volunteer training, training volunteers so they understand some of the basics and the fundamentals of English. The other piece is getting more physical resources. We have a wonderful VITAL collection of resources that circulate, but you can't write in them, and you can't take them home. And so they don't really kind of meet the need of people who need, you know, daily English and lots and lots of input. So I'm really excited. About two hours ago, I just got notified that we received some funding from the SCAP organization. They've given us some CARES funding, about $7,000 of print materials that we can give directly to these learners. So it's going to include print workbooks for basic manuscript and writing and learning the letters, picture dictionaries that include an audio component that you can download, so learning basic vocabulary and pronunciation, as well as a basic English language curriculum. So we are thrilled to have this kind of influx of new energy and new resources, and are really going to focus on getting those out to the community as soon as we can. The other piece of that puzzle is when you're new to the community, the concept of an American public library may also be something that you're unfamiliar with. So we've been working across different service points, training for all MCPL staff on communicating with limited English speakers, on how to explain basic library services, library transactions, getting a library card, using limited English. And if limited English does not meet the need, how do you use a translation app to make sure that communication is successful? We've also been working with some of these partner organizations to identify alternative documentation options. If someone doesn't have the traditional form of documentation, how can we make the address verification process simple so that we are not creating additional barriers to access for this population? So that is kind of one large area, probably our biggest focus right now. I have a couple of others, but are there any questions about that before I continue on? So the other largest service that we're seeing need for right now is basic digital literacy skills. So in June, we resumed our partnership with the Work One office. Work One comes to the library twice a month to offer evening computer classes. So they offer a variety of topics. The most popular so far has been basic computer skills and using Excel. So that's been a successful programming. We've got the schedule out through December and plan to continue on into 2023. So those are kind of more computer classes that people can attend, but the other need that we see is for one-on-one basic computer skills. If you're just getting started and you need to learn, a computer class might be intimidating, but learning one skill at a time might be a little bit more appealing. So learning something very tangible, how do I send an email? How do I send an attachment? How do I organize photos on my phone? How do I FaceTime with my children or my family members? So we are partnering with the Area 10 Agency on Aging to kind of increase access to these one-on-one appointments. So we've set up a system where Area 10 and outreach staff can respond to these requests for one-to-one basic computer help. Right now, that program is kind of in the pilot phase. We're working out the communication and making sure that we're able to respond to the need and then hope to eventually expand the program to also include volunteers. So we're excited to offer both programming as well as one-on-one tech help for the community. The last big area that we're working on is reorganizing our training for volunteers. That's currently one of our biggest bottlenecks in terms of being able to provide services. Our previous model of training volunteers, you know, we're reliant on volunteers. We have two and a half staff and typically 100 or more volunteers who provide the essential services. The old model really relied very heavily on long in-person training, which requires a lot of staff hours, a lot of print materials. Those methods are still relevant in some ways, but we want to provide something that's more accessible and materials that are going to be kind of more sustainable. So we're looking to put our materials into an online learning management system and supplement that with additional in-person training in the future. So that's kind of our roadmap for the next year in terms of being able to meet the needs that we're seeing. So my final anecdote for you, just had a great interaction before I came down here that I wanted to share. One of our learners, she arrived in the U.S. about a month ago, and she comes to our conversation groups, and tomorrow, she has another English class that she needs to get online for, and so she was asking if there was a space that she could do so. So I showed her a VITAL classroom, how to get on the Wi-Fi, showed her how to sign in on our calendar, and she was so excited about the space, and she said, how do I pay? How much is it? And I said, there's no cost. Everything in the library is free. And she was so delighted, and I'm going to paraphrase here, but something along the lines of, she said, this place is so wonderful. It's the first place I found in Bloomington, and I'm so happy to be here. So thank you all for supporting those services. It means a lot. Do you have any further questions for either Chris or myself?
Job both are doing. Thank you.
Thank you.
I don't have a question, but one day, I noticed a truck go by my house. I live out by Unionville, and it was in the Unionville School parking lot. So I said, I'll just kind of drive up here and see what it's like. And I went in, and I was greeted well, and I was asking questions about early buildup of the United States when Indiana began to be settled by people, and they found something. One young man was a volunteer, and then there were some other people, but they helped me very much, and I watched them work with other people, and they didn't know who I was. But I was just, and I really thought that you folks do a great job in taking that material out there all around the state, out all around the county. That was great. I enjoyed it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much, Bethany. We really appreciate that and all the work that you and your volunteers do, as well as Chris and all your staff as well, because you both provide very important services to our library and to our community. Thank you. Okay. It is now time for public comment. Do we have any members of the public that would like to come forward and address the Seeing none, all those, do I have a motion to adjourn our September meeting?
So moved. Thank you.
All those in favor of adjournment signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. The ayes have it. We are adjourned.